I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the school committee? Seeing no hands, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is student representatives. And tonight, we'll start with North. Good evening.
Good evening. For this week's Plymouth North news, we have many athletic achievements and announcements to discuss. First off, Jeff Yang was named Patriot League Kenan Division MVP. The Patriot League All-Stars for our winter season were Kaylee Driscoll, Kylie Selvik, Sam Guston, Paige Joyce, Rachel Montague, Kylie Green, Brady Sorensen, James Doherty, Chris Hogan, and Jeff Yang. The Fourth Annual Poetry Out Loud Competition took place on January 28th after school-wide classroom competitions, encouraging students to learn about great poetry through memorization and recitation. At North, sixteen finalists competed for the chance to represent North at the regional competition march. Olivia Free won the competition, and Megan Johnson was the runner-up. The Emerging Your Artist 2020 Exhibition Committee announced Katie Wynott as an honorable mention recipient. Last week, thirty-one students at Plymouth North attended the Harvard Model United Nations Conference in Boston from Thursday through Sunday. The students represented Indonesia and discussed international topics ranging from the social, humanitarian, political, and financial. It was both an educational and fun experience for all. Last Friday, report cards were distributed at the end of the day. February break begins on Monday, February 17th, and we'll be back on Monday, the 24th. The DECA States Competition will be held in Boston beginning Thursday, February 27th. The marking students will compete for the position to present at DECA Nationals. The Plymouth South and North Guidance Departments will be hosting the Fifth Annual Advanced Placement Orientation Night for students and parents this Thursday, February 13th. It will be held from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at South High School in the cafeteria. This night gives students and their parents the opportunity to hear about AP classes and the benefits of taking AP subjects. Seniors were reminded that the sale of caps and gowns will begin on February 4th and run through February 14th. Diploma forms will be needed to be completed and signed by both the student and parent guardian, and turned into the main office or to Miss Wilcott. Seniors will also be -- should be frequently checking their Gmails for current senior class information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, South.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to read Plymouth South's school report. First, I would like to start off by mentioning that juniors will be attending Credit for Life tomorrow at Memorial Hall from 8:30 AM to 12:00 PM. If your schedule allows it, we would love to have you attend this great event. Sonia Abdel Fatah, Joe Delano, Ryan Francis, Lilian Holmes, and Zachary Lyons were accepted into the SEMSBA Senior District Festival after their auditions last Saturday. Congratulations. In addition, Joe and Zachary had the highest audition score for their instruments. National History Day will be on Thursday, February 6th, at the Plymouth South High School from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM for the students to display all their hard work. We hope you can attend. The combined North and Souths High School Coffee House will be this Friday at 7:00 PM at the Plymouth South High School Black Box Theater. It is always filled with a talented group of students. On February 10th, Project Smile will be available in the medical assisting classroom. The Yellow Boat Performance will be February 11th at 7:00 PM in the South High School Performing Arts Center. Tickets can be bought at the door. The play will be performed this weekend on Saturday in Acton, Boxborough, at the ITS Festival. On February 13th, we will be hosting the Advanced Placement Information Night at 6:30 PM. Students, as well as their parents and guardians, are encouraged to attend to learn about the curriculum of these classes. Also, on February 13th, Mr. LaRanger will be holding his annual Strategies for Success Breakfast at 7:45. The paper I'm now passing out is the flyer for this event. This brings together freshmen who may be struggling in any of their classes, as well as their families, to give them helpful advice. The Term Two Honors Breakfast will be held on February 26th for the ninth and 10th graders and the 27th for 11th and 12th graders. Lastly, I would like to add that we are all looking forward to February break, which begins on the 17th and goes through to the 21st. I, as well as three other students from Plymouth South High School, will be leaving for Milan, Italy for the exchange program Wednesday, the 12th.
Wow, exciting.
Okay.
So close.
Thank you much. So we have our program update. Dr. Mestes?
Yes, tonight, we have our program update for our food services program. We have Patrick Van Caudt and Patty Callahan-Ryan. They're here tonight to give us our annual update. And Patrick, I'll turn it over to you. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us. Once again, you were here after the Super Bowl, but it wasn't involving the Patriots. Who cares? Usually, we continue to expand. We have sixteen schools and sites that we service, feeding eight thousand one hundred and forty-eight-plus students breakfast and lunch. Free and reduced lunch percentile is at thirty-three point six eight percent. It's very, very close to what it was last year. Total overall is about six hundred and sixty-three thousand lunches and one hundred and eighty-two thousand breakfasts per year. We currently have seventy employees, one secretary bookkeeper, who's invaluable, two band drivers, four managers, eighteen leaders, fifty-three cafeteria workers, a food service director, and assistants. I'd like to thank everyone for all their hard work. We set up the models and the systems, and they're the ones who actually carry it through and feed the kids in the twenty-two-minute time period that we have to eat. So hats off to them for all their hard work. Additional food service programs. One of our largest growing programs right now is our summer food service, not in terms of locations. We still have at four sites Camp Clark, Boys and Girls Club, PCIS, and Hedge Elementary School, but everything is increasing, showing that there is truly a gap between the time the school letting out to getting back in session. Last year, we served approximately twenty-five thousand meals. This just past year, excuse me, two years ago, it was twenty-five thousand meals. This year was top thirty thousand meals. One part of it was that we did add the breakfast to Camp Clark and the Boys and Girls Club, but it still just grew, even the lunch portion of it. We also do Harbor Academy, Pilgrim Academy, PEC. And then, on our other category is Council on Aging, which we do five days a week, year round. Rising Tide Public Charter School, catering at multiple events and venues, and we also do the catering at specific events at Memorial Hall. In fiscal year ten, the other income that we had brought in was ninety-five thousand dollars. Last year, I expect that we're going to hit about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So we're kind of feeding children and doing a million other things off. Sometimes, our calendar gets rather full really quick, and sometimes, we're actually kind of holding people off and seeing if they can do things on an alternate day. I guess we're the best deal in town. Lunch choices. We do, we set up different meal stations, kind of like a food court. At the elementary schools, it's a hot meal of sort of sandwiches and soups mainly because they can't make up their minds fast enough. As time goes on, they'll expand. Secondary schools, we do the bistro or salads, sandwiches, pre-mates, or made-to-order, grab-and-goes, which we try to recommend to everyone since there's such little time to eat. We do have quite a few gluten-free choices, all sorts of dietary restrictions, et cetera, that we have to adhere to as well to stay in business at this point. We also have the World's Fair, which is the menu that you see online, and the Grill, which is like burgers, chicken sandwiches, hot dogs, et cetera. This year, we did the annual Tomato Sauce Project, the tomatoes that were grown in all the gardens at the different schools. We collected them throughout the summer, and we added another dish to it. It was from a recipe from UMass Amherst, and it was mac and cheese butternut squash. Don't tell the kids that we put butternuts. Purate it, put it in the macaroni and cheese. We sent it off to, I believe it was four different schools, and it was quite good. We got more compliments from the adults than we did the kids. Once again, we're participating in the DOD, fresh fruits and vegetables, and this year, I mean, last year was at twenty-five thousand dollars allocated, and this year it's thirty thousand dollars. And that is basically free fruits and vegetables, and it's a wide array. It's an opportunity for us to try different things that aren't super popular, but Brussels sprouts, cauliflower, things like that, grapefruits. But those are things that I think it fits for that. We also invested in a software program called Nutrislice, and it does the nutrient analysis that shows all the ingredients as you hover aboard each item. And it's an app on a phone, too, so you can punch in your favorite school or the school you go to, your children go to, and it'll show you the menu for every single day at that particular school. And it's growing day by day by day, the subscribers to it, so.
Child nutrition programs, guidelines.
Well, they change like the weather in New England, so there's always like a rumor of what's actually going to happen as far as changes go, and we just kind of sit back and wait. It doesn't matter anyways, because the state of Massachusetts always goes with the most strict guidelines anyways, and we don't change back. What we're serving, are we following the guidelines, policies, procedures, the nutritional analysis and guidelines? We have to invest ourselves into staff development and training, a specific amount of hours on a yearly basis. We currently qualify still at Hedge Elementary School as a community eligibility program, so everybody there eats for free, breakfast and lunch. We're kind of falling further away in cold spring. We're very, very close to qualifying there as well, but we missed about a few applications. We always want to tell everybody that you can apply anytime throughout the year for free and reduced lunch. It doesn't matter if something could happen, and we can do it in an instant. So if there's a hardship with the family, something along that lines. We also have to, it's new regulations that we have to tie in with the DESC, our financials, a P and L, accounts receivable, payable, et cetera. Student lunch prices and adult lunch prices, I'm going to talk about towards the end of the presentation, that we have to keep up with whatever the free rate reimbursement rate is. That's why we have to raise prices at times, because we're supposed to equal the same amount, as far as that's concerned, and stay consistent with the other school districts as well. Revenue from the non-program items is really keeping us afloat, to say the least, because it's more like a restaurant business in the heads. Profitability is there. Labor percentages continues to go up, obviously, and this is what you're fighting. Insurance, we still pay one hundred percent of our insurance. The bad debt charges and charging policy, which we'll be working on very soon. I guess we are working on it now. Student average daily participation. We have leveled out in 2015, or 2015 was kind of the bottom. I always talk about the roller coaster of when things are going to hit, and that was it. It was about thirty-four hundred eighty-four students, and now we're leveling out about thirty-five hundred. It's right about fifty percent of the student population is what we're feeding. A la carte sales, I don't get too concerned about that, because yes, they continue to come out with new things, but it's, you know, a fancier baked chip or something along that line, so I'm not so concerned if that trails off a little bit. But our breakfast participation is still maintaining over a thousand breakfasts a Expenses, my least favorite slide. Food cost is at one point three million. It's up about four percent from last year. It is getting tougher and tougher and tougher to get companies to bid on our products. That's the bottom line. Typically, their markups, you know, when you're dealing with a restaurant, are quite large, and when they're dealing with a bid process, they call it, you know, pencil shaving, basically. They're making pennies on the dollar, is what it comes down to. And it basically keeps them from laying off drivers, warehouse workers, et cetera. But it's still, it's getting, some people have just pulled out of the business. Some of our people that I've been dealing with for twenty-five-plus years all of a sudden just stopped this past year, which drove up the pricing, which is shocking to me, but it is, it happens, it's time. Labor has gone up with the cost of living, one point two three seven million. Some of our, one of our largest fixed costs is health insurance. As you see, from fiscal year seventeen was three hundred and nineteen thousand, we're at three hundred and forty-four thousand. It means we need to sell one hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and eight meals at three dollars just to pay for health insurance. Other expenses, about a hundred and sixty thousand. That's fuel, meals, tax, uniforms, vehicle repairs, software, which continues to increase at an alarming rate, actually. License renewals, equipment repairs, once again. Luckily, we have two newer schools, and I was able to take a lot of the surplus equipment and spread it around. Equipment replacement, office supplies, printing costs, charging issues. Questions, I have questions for myself, actually. I wanted to talk about the meal price. It's currently at three dollars for the secondary schools and two dollars and seventy-five cents for the elementary schools. Right now, the reimbursement rate for a free meal is at three dollars and fifty-three cents. So we're a bit behind that, but it's okay. You fill it out according to your participation in the formula, and we're okay, but I don't think we'll be okay next year. So I would recommend that we go up a quarter. And that way, I don't like to go up the dimes or the nickels like a lot of the districts do, because then you're just coming back the year next year, and the next year, and the next year, and it's kind of silly as far as change is concerned as well at the register. It just slows everything down. But that would be my recommendation to stay current. And then, we could, like I said before, too, it's been three years since we've gone up in price, and I could probably keep it at that for the next three years as well.
So we would go from two seventy-five to three dollars, two point three dollars to three.
Yeah. Thank you. I forgot to go back. Any questions for us? I have all sorts of charts and diagrams to answer.
I know Mrs. Haywood is probably going to say the same thing, but we both wanted to thank you for all your help with MLK breakfast. I know we kind of threw a lot of things at you for No Place for Hate, because we just, I mean, not having done it for a good, probably, five years, I'd say.
Seven.
Seven years. It was trying to figure out what our, who would come and who wouldn't come and what we would sell, and we were really happy that we ended up having a really great turnout, but I know we put you guys through a lot of like numbers and changing, so you guys were awesome.
They name dropped you, so.
But thank you so much for doing that, and the food was delicious, and everybody was really helpful and friendly. Yeah, it was. It was fantastic.
Is it something that you'd be doing every year?
Yes. So now you can rely on us. We can be up there on our MLK breakfast.
Do you think it'll grow?
We hope so.
We hope, yeah.
That's the hope. I mean, we used to have the turnout.
We used to have the turnout, yeah, exactly.
Probably even at South. But I think we use the culinary.
It was always culinary.
Yeah, so that was the difference, but.
We did a large, a week-long event in Memorial Hall for all the police chiefs.
The outreach program, so we've had all the police officers in the state.
And it's, yeah, it started at a hundred and ten people, and then it went, yeah, then it went to a hundred and seventy, like in the four days, it just.
So I guess we don't feel so bad?
You're nothing, yeah.
We feel awful. We're like, ugh. Now we've learned things, and there are things we can change, so, but thank you for that. And then, the, making the decision on the increase, when would we have to do that? I'm assuming soon.
I have a stare at Gary.
Yeah. Either Gary.
Well, I, through you, Dr. Sorensen, I think we would have to get that on the next couple of months if we wanted to. We typically put it on our calendars, we put it on our publication information that goes out, so I would say April, we would want to do that. One of the things that, you know, Patty and Patrick have done a good job in is trying to keep the prices down. And one of the things that our program has difficulty in is managing some of the costs, and I don't, I don't know that the community at large realizes that this is a hundred percent self-supporting program, and they've, they've had to think out of the box to generate funding. So they've really tried to do that. If they didn't bring in the extra dollars, our lunch prices would have gone up long before they are suggesting. So it's, it's a credit to the creativity of the program. The problem that we have is fixed costs just, you know, they're fixed for the year. That's about it. So we have some challenges. And, and, you know, like Patrick had pointed out, we do have a number of students that, you know, rack up, you know, bills. And it's, you know, we have received some donations from anonymous donors to actually offset some of these costs, but that doesn't compare to the total value of what is a deficit. So we do get some aid, but, I mean, we're up there, and this is compounded, this is not just one year.
What is our write-off? Like, what do you end up having to write off at the end of the year?
It's probably about thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
And it just, like Gary said, it just compounds. So, you know, you're, logistically, you're supposed to wipe it clean, but everyone needs to still be responsible for the debt as well. So it looks, you know, crazy when you stare at the larger number, but a lot of the kids have, some of the kids have left district, or they're getting ready to graduate, or things like that, too. And the first thing we do when we go to look at these different situations is to get them on the program. But like, you know, today, I was looking at the guidelines, and I believe it was forty-six thousand dollars for a family of four. If you make above that, you don't qualify for free and reduced. And that, to me, is one of the most shocking, you know, talk about grids and numbers that I stare at all day long. That's crazy to me. I don't understand or see how, where these numbers come from and how you could survive on that in this day and age, but it's, you know, something we still have to deal with all the time. Clary has all the time.
Patrick, I know that probably four or five years ago, the federal government Department of Education made different requirements for meals, and that caused the prices to skyrocket. Now, I heard, frankly, I didn't really pay attention, but there's talk now that change is occurring again, and now, do we expect the prices to go down because they're easing up some of the requirements, SOL and things like that?
Yeah, what they're doing is they're, the SOL regulations basically have gone to the wayside, which is good, because that, you pay for research and development to try to make these products still taste good. And, but the other part of it is, is they're trying to get rid of the waste, the amount of waste, and predominantly, what's being thrown out are fruits and vegetables. And the upturn for us that I've seen is that more and more and more kids are eating fresh fruits and vegetables, which is wonderful, which is fantastic. That's the wonderful part of it. Unfortunately, it costs a lot more, and those prices fluctuate throughout the year. I sit there and find myself following weather reports out of Mexico, you know, in California, and the droughts, and Arizona, and things like that. And it's just insane how it affects us so quickly, but that's part of the business.
But back to my question, the price spike, the cost spike was five years ago. Do we anticipate a decrease?
I don't foresee that at all, only because of the lack of bidding, to tell you the truth. I went to a show recently, so right now, this past year, we have one bidder from Thurston, and they're from Connecticut. So here it is, they come up here, if they forget an item, or it's just not in the truck, something like that, I have to scramble to find these different items and then pay a little bit more money than ever to get them.
And the whole grain items cost a lot of money, too, so we still have to go by those categories.
Right, and those will never go away, and so it's all kind of like, you know, they say that, you know, these things are gonna, it's gonna reduce, or it would appear that it's gonna reduce the price, but I don't foresee that happening at all. Gordon Food Service is another one that's trying to get into the business, and what you have to do is you have to get, you know, many, many, many different school districts going to their food shows and talking to all the vendors and trying to get those products into the, into those warehouses, and then they'll bid on us. So if we can get at least two bidders, then we'll at least have a fair shot, and that'll help drive the price down. But once again, the big, the big things, the insurance, the food cost is still going to probably stay the same, if not rise even further, and wages, of wages as well, too. That's a huge spend, too.
All right, thank you. Other questions?
It's great that we bring in some extra income from serving meals at Harbor Academy and Rising Tide, whatnot, but do you ever find that sometimes it stretches the staff too thin and that it affects our service in our schools? Or, I mean, it's kind of a balance there.
It's trying to find that balance. In some days, if there's a function that we just can't do, I'll just say, you know what, I can't do that, we'll stretch too thin, or I'll call substitutes in to kind of help relieve the stress that's all about at PCIS, so that I can get the extra functions, so.
I mean, it's very innovative, so I like that. But on the other hand, I want to make sure that our schools come first.
The kids are always first.
Patty does a juggling act every morning, and a lot of it will, we'll foresee what's going on if it's a heavier function. We'll have like a part-time worker who usually comes at a ten o'clock, come in in the morning so they can help with the morning hours.
Wow. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Any other questions?
Okay, thanks for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to the committee, is there anything from all business to bring up this evening? I don't have to look to my right. How about new business? Nothing? Application to MSBA? Dr. Mestes?
Yes, tonight, we have three applications for the MSBA. This is a school repair program that the MSBA sponsors, and as you know, through the capital process, we had three school roof replacement projects on that docket. And one of the things that we have the opportunity to do is to offset those costs with the grant from the MSBA. So in order for us to qualify for those grants, we need to have a vote by the Plymouth School Committee in order for us to qualify for those, for these grants. After approval from the school committee, we would then need the Board of Selectmen to actually authorize that submission of this application as well. So what will happen is if we did get MSBA funding, we would be reimbursed by the MSBA for a percentage of the total cost, which is a number that changes every year. Like our building projects, we probably got roughly, on the average, a fifty percent reimbursement. So, but what happened is through the capital process, we would actually fund these roofs in their entirety. Then the town of Plymouth would then get a reimbursement check shortly after, and then pay the town back whatever agreed percentage the document from the MSBA would indicate. So tonight is the first step in the process. The school committee would approve if, that if we're successful after the school committee, then it goes to Board of Selectmen. After Board of Selectmen, it goes up to the MSBA. Keep in mind that we would need to get Town Meeting funding to actually begin the process, but this may help us at Town Meeting to be able to, you know, let the Town Meeting body know that we could. that we could actually get money back on this. So that's what this is for tonight.
Okay. Questions from the committee members? So when we submit our statement of interest to MSBA, I would imagine the next, they then send us probably a whole packet of information, doc, of application that we have to fill out for the projects. We then submit that back. And so my question is, do they make a commitment to us before we go to town meeting? They do not?
No, we have to submit this package. And once the package is submitted, they would then turn around and tell us if we have approved or not. So that's my understanding.
Okay. Well, these are, for each one of these roofs is an action item. We have to approve it, to submit the statement of interest. So I, Ms. Badger?
So I move that, I'm guessing I have to read the whole thing?
Can we do them all in one motion? They, they...
They're individual motions for the individual projects.
We, we will submit each project individually. The, just to follow up and answer a little bit more on your question. There's about fifty million dollars available. But what happens is similar to the building projects, is that they rank beneath. And we have to, you're absolutely correct, we have to submit additional information, how it affects the students, how it affects the ability to learn, how it affects the educational experience. In addition to how, by not doing this, our asset is not being taken care of. So, but I'm sorry, but we have to get into the queue prior to even getting the design funds.
Also, keep in mind that the fifty million dollars is allocated for communities that actually have the approval at this level and Board of Selectmen level. So you have to have everything in order, otherwise you don't qualify. You have to have everything in a, in a row.
Ms. Badger?
How long does that approval last for? So if we do it this year, is it something we have to do every year? Or does it just get, keep, we just get in the queue? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Badger?
So I move that having convened an open meeting on February third, twenty twenty, prior to the closing date, the school committee of the town of Plymouth, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinance, authorize the superintendent of schools to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority this statement of interest form dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty, for the Federal Furnace Elementary School located at eight sixty Federal Furnace Road, Plymouth, Massachusetts, which described and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Board, School Building Authority in the future for replacement, renovation of modernizing of schools' facility systems, such as roofs to increase energy conservation and increase the building's envelope integrity of a school facility, and hereby further specifically acknowledge that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Board Authority or commit, or authority or commits the town of Plymouth school, oh my gosh, the town of Plymouth School District to filling an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Too filing an application, not filling.
Oh, sorry.
So that is the motion?
I can't read.
Yes.
Does anybody need that motion repeated?
You might want that filing an application instead of filling.
Mr. Morgan is the second on that motion. Any questions to it? We understand? Okay, we can vote on it. So that motion for federal furnace has passed.
You did it, it doesn't work.
We would need a similar motion for Indian Brook. Mr. Morgan?
So we need to read the whole?
No, I don't think you do. Mr. Morgan moves this.
You can do it.
I make a motion to apply a application of interest for, in support of the repairs at Indian Brook Elementary School.
And that's seconded by Ms. Badger. Everybody understand?
Yes.
Okay, we'll vote for it. And that motion has passed. And now same motion for West Elementary School, please. Let me say. So I'm moved.
Do it, do it.
Goodness, I, you go ahead.
Okay. I move that we support the application on February third, twenty twenty, for admission or of interest on February fourteenth, twenty twenty, for West Elementary School.
Thank you. That's the motion. Word is similar to the other two. And seconded by Ms. Haywood. On a question, we shall vote for it. Okay. Update on the search for our new superintendent. Ms. Frye?
Yes, as I shared last meeting, the job is posted. We've had a great deal of interest. The deadline for the posting is February fourteenth. And we do have a great deal of parent volunteers, we have staff volunteers, I'm working through the student members. And we will probably be reviewing applications right after February vacation. We get them together and work with Dr. Sorensen to review all of those with the committee. And then we'll be moving forward for the end of March, on schedule right now. So we have gotten a lot of great feedback about the stakeholder input. People have called and shared, so a lot of information, which is good, they're happy about it.
People are very interested.
Yes, yep.
Any questions? Retirements?
Yes, we have a few to report tonight. Kim Lotosik, who's a para educator, after twenty-six years from Plymouth North High School, retired March twenty twenty. Paul Demij, the athletic director, who's had three years of service from Plymouth North High School, retired June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And I have one very sad retirement to my right, Mr. Gary Costin, who's had tremendous service in Plymouth. I know you all know that and I can speak firsthand, after twelve years of service. And he will have an official retirement date at the end of July, but he'll be transitioning in an interim role through, so we can have a strong transition to the next individual. So I'm not happy about Mr. Costin. Anyone named Gary, I know, exactly. Anyone named Gary is on my bad list these days.
What else is new?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, I like the wishy-washy individuals, especially Mr. Costin. Happy retirement and hopefully you keep in touch.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Superintendent, Mr. Port, please.
Yes, tonight I have a couple of things to report. Today and a couple of other times in the last month, I've read at the elementary schools. And I know a lot of our administrators here at Central Office have gone to, to be part of the one book, one school across all our elementary. So today I read at Mandment Elementary and it was just fantastic. I've read at Hedge, I'll be reading at Indian Brook on Friday. But I can tell you, it's just wonderful to go in and read a full chapter of a book that's relative to what they're reading as a school. So it's been a lot of fun just being with kids and being in that space. So I've really enjoyed that. Friday night, I had the opportunities to go to Atlanta Junior at, at North. And what a, what a outstanding, outstanding production to see our middle school students just excelling at a very high level. And all credit goes to our students, the dedication that they had, and also our directors, support staff for really highlighting that our visual performing arts department is just, is functioning at a very good level. I'm very pleased with that. The last thing I have to report on this evening is relative to the coronavirus. And I know, you know, coronavirus is in China and it's making its way around the world. And one of the things that I wanted to assure the community of Plymouth is we're not going to be taking a trip to China this, this year. I know that's one thing that we are concerned about, travel. And I, as you know, you know, having our students leave the country, we worry about that. I think the coronavirus has, has created another level of worry because of the contagious nature of that virus. And I also want our community to know that we, we have children this year from, from China that actually came to Plymouth
Yes.
two weeks before the coronavirus outbreak actually hit Wuhan. So for logistics, our students are not from Wuhan. I hope they understand that, that the community and other people that are concerned about the virus, our students are doing very well. They're thriving. Matter of fact, one of them got one of our own viruses this weekend and is doing well today. But our kids are doing, are doing very, very well. And our host families have, you know, reached out to us. We sent the letter out this weekend to our host families assuring them that our kids are safe. And that, I think they, they believe that. I think they get a lot of pressure from the outside world and, you know, building questions about, you know, how safe are our, our kids and our families? And they are very safe. Our kids have, have done well. Our kids from China have done very well. They're thriving in the school system and their, their, their health is in good shape. So I just want to assure the community that we, we are concerned about traveling outside the country, anywhere. Not necessarily to China, but just anywhere. And we're also taking our exchange very seriously and having these students here. And we feel really good about where they are today. Back to you, Dr. Sorensen.
Thanks, thanks for that information. Everybody needs to know that. Any questions for the superintendent? Reports and proposals from committee members? Any reports this evening? Okay. Plymouth Building Committee, was there a meeting last Thursday?
Um, there's one coming up this Thursday.
Am I missing something?
You missed something?
Oh, yeah. My goals.
Did I skip over something?
My goals. My goals.
Oh, mid-cycle, I jumped over that, sorry.
That's all right, I do it all the time. Had nothing to do with my age, just the complexity of the job.
That's what they all say.
So yearly, I give an update on, on my goals. And one of the things that I want everyone to kind of wrap their head around for tonight's presentation is all our staff members, all of our faculty develop goals every year. And one of the things that we try to do is base those goals on our strategic plan. And we're very fortunate that we've been able to use that strategic plan to guide our growth over the last, I would say, ten years. And then, you know, ten years ago is when we actually started our first strategic, strategic plan. That's when it was out. So we're getting ready to refresh that. And this first goal is relative to the refresh of that, of that plan. Right now, we're scheduled to have our first meeting on February twelfth, twenty twenty. And we have, we'll have a schedule of meetings that will actually take us to the end of the school year to have our plan refreshed. So that is something that we're very excited to do. I think it will prepare the school district for the next five years. And I think the strategic plan, the current twenty twenty plan has been very helpful in helping us to just focus on some key issues. And the framework of it is, is very good. I think there's a number of pieces that have come on the scene over the last few years that need to be integrated into that plan. And our community will be part of that. I think one of the things that we're gonna find useful is the surveys that were sent out for the superintendent's search. And that's a, a great deal of information that I think is pertinent to where the community would really like the district to, to go. And that is very valuable information. I think having the amount of people respond that we did, it gives us a fairly, very good understanding of what the priorities are. So that information will be shared with this, with this group as well. So that's the first goal. I'm gonna move down to the second goal, which is Panorama. As you have heard from our building leaders and school improvement plan, development teams, the, the school councils, the Panorama program, we implemented about three years ago. And we did, we actually implemented it only at the middle school. And we did it purposely because it was part of our prevention rollout. And we really wanted to use Panorama to gain a good sense and understanding of where our students were around social, emotional awareness. And, and how we could use the information that we collect on students to be able to continue to look at trending and profiles of student to really highlight where we need to spend our time with students specifically. So that program got a great deal of positive recognition at the middle school level. We moved up to the high school level, but we felt that it was important to implement it at the elementary level so that over time, we would have a K through twelve view for children. And Dr. Campbell and I first saw this program at a conference a long time ago. It must have been eight, nine years ago when it was just developing. And we thought, you know, this is something that we, we should look at. And it has become a program that, as we've looked at our professional development, we've had a great deal of professional development this year. The, the discussion that people are having, our staff, faculty are having, administrators are having around children, is it's a deep dive into information, but it's not, it, it really demystifies the whole idea of reviewing data. It makes it very pleasant. And one of the things that I like to do for school committees is actually have a, a team come in and do a sample of what it does. Like just have you come in and we'll just put it up and we'll, we'll, we'll put up a sample set of data so you can actually see it. And see how we use it as a team, which is something that we'll get on, on the books for you. So we've made a lot of progress this year. By the end of this school year, our school district will have a, a complete rollout of Panorama. And I, I can't say enough about the organization. They are very attentive to the Plymouth Public Schools. We suggest improvements and they go off and create them. And they're accustomed to what we believe are in the best interests of our children. So I think it's created a very sophisticated way of looking at children through a different lens that we have never, ever felt that we had before. So my plan is to get a sample on the screen of information so you can see how we use it and the kind of data that we can pull and, and show you how teams actually use it for informing of our children. The next goal update is relative to the Diversity Committee. We had our first meeting on January twenty ninth here in this room. It was well-attended. We had, we have a facilitator that actually is a resident of Plymouth, a parent of a child here in Plymouth. And I believe the, the first meeting was a good start in us having a long-term committee that will look at the wide and deep topic of diversity. And, you know, as I was going home last week, I, I said to myself, maybe we need to change that name because it, it does not give the scope of what we're trying to do credit. Because it almost narrows the concept of what we're talking about. So my thought next meeting is to kind of, you know, go through the thought that I have of, as we were wrapping up last week. It was just really broad, what we're talking about. But it, one of the things that we talked about in this meeting was really, how do we chunk the, the work that we're gonna do so that we can actually get stuff done and not overwhelm ourselves based on the magnitude of what we're talking about? So I thought the meeting was, was well, was well-done. It's nice to be in a meeting where you're a participant and not running the meeting. I think that was a common theme with some of the participants, that it was nice to just contribute and not be so worried about how well the meeting's going. And we had a good facilitator that actually helped us with that. I have a facilitator, a similar type of facilitator for the Strategic Planning Group. Because I think it's important for the administration and stakeholders at the table to kind of sit back and, and let a, a plan develop organically, which I believe that this group experienced that, a little bit of taste of that. that, a little bit of taste of that. But I think it's important, as we discussed last meeting, the first meeting, is how can this become a long-term project with, with just some leadership behind it to make it move forward and thrive? So that's the third goal. And the last goal is relative to my work on the 400th and the commemoration. This is a heavy lift. We have a lot of opportunities in the town of Plymouth for the 400th commemoration. We've been working on project after project, and I will present to the committee a list of projects that we've had a part in, and you will see visibly and also anecdotally some of the things that we've been able to work on. One of the things that we've been working on for, for almost two years is the Massachusetts Chronicles book, which is, is just developing to be an outstanding resource for, for not only Plymouth, but for schools. Every single school in Massachusetts will receive 35 copies of this book, and it started here, started in this building, and we're just so happy that we have been part of that, and we've been able to motivate it. And it, I would say it's a collaborative effort from the 400th organization to Bridgewater State College, to Dr. Campbell, Mr. Powers up in the social studies department, teachers that are work here in Plymouth that are working on the teacher's guide, Chris Lloyd and his team on What on Earth Books, Linda Coombs from the Wapinawg tribe, the Plymouth 400, Michelle Pecoraro and her staff, you know, Fred Clark and his staff at Bridgewater State University have been just a partner in helping us to get this to the level of importance that we believe it can have for a very special time in the history of Massachusetts. So we're excited for that. I think it's something that the entire community will be proud of, but most importantly, this book is available worldwide, and it will be something that I think we can all be proud of. And, yeah, it's pretty, pretty cool. So we're working on a, on a release date. We were initially thinking on September 1st that we were gonna have a big kickoff, but that's a primary election date, and we realized that last week, and that's the first day of school. So we, we felt that it'll, it'll be that same week, but we're working on probably Thursday of that week, and we'll have a big kickoff here in Plymouth. It'll be a large gathering of people to help us kick that off, and I would say this committee will be invited guests to that event, and will be very exciting for this community. So I look forward to presenting more information as we get closer to the end of the school year, but we will probably be close to wrapping up all of the events that we have for the Plymouth 400 by the end of November of next year. And I think we, the Plymouth Public Schools, will have a prominent position in all of those events that we have worked on and what we've made available, ourselves available to the Plymouth 400 Commission, so. And that's my report tonight, based, based on the progress that I've had so far in this school year.
Okay. Comprehensive. Thank you. Committee members, were there any clarifications or questions or need to discuss anything there? All right, and now, sorry about jumping over that. I was about to say Building Committee.
Oh, we meet this Thursday.
Okay. Now we have the warrants this evening. Mr. Morgan?
Whereas the school committee members have provided a copy of the cost center transfer and transaction summary report and warrant review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve report and accounts payable warrant S020620 dated February 6th, 2020, amount of $120,184.83 as presented.
Is there a second to that motion? Ms. Haywood is the second? Any questions on that one? Okay, please vote for that warrant. It's coming up. Give me one sec. Okay. Okay, that's unanimous. I know the revolving funds warrant, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, whereas the school committee members have provided a copy of the grants and revolving funds warrant for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the grants, revolving funds warrant G020620 dated February 6th, in amount of $67,776.38 as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second on that one. Are there any questions? Okay, we can vote. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. We have the minutes of December, the first, no, the executive session minutes of December the 16th. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Badger?
I move we accept the minute, the meeting minutes of December 16th as presented.
The executive session?
Yes, executive session, sorry.
Seconded by? Ms. Haywood? Any questions? Okay, we'll vote for those. And everybody voted in favor. And now we have the open, open meeting minutes from December the 16th. Ms. Badger?
I just have one little edit. On page nine, it says that I said a lot of schools are introducing, it should just be colleges are introducing the design approach. So it's just one little edit. And just says, Ms. Badger said, a lot of schools are introducing the design thinking approach, and yes, at least I think it wasn't page nine.
What paragraph?
Ooh, I just copied and pasted it. Hold on.
It's all right, I'll find it. Okay, I see.
Just one little word, just from schools. Yeah, just colleges.
With the addition of the word colleges in that sentence, do we have a motion to...
Or just replace schools with colleges?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Seconded by? Ms. Haywood is the second? Questions? Any more questions? Okay, we're voting those. Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the school committee tonight? Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.[1789.33][1789.33]